Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 22, 2017 legislative session for the city of Salisbury. I would ask you all right now to please silence any electronic devices that make any kind of noise. Should you have to take a phone call, we ask that you please exit the room and take it in the hallway. Should for some reason an emergency arise during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn and then a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If you should need assistance, please let us know, we'd be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Theresa Langdon of Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church for our invocation.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here with you this evening and offer this invocation. Inlocation, according to Merriam-Webster's dictionary, is the act or process of petitioning for help or support. And certainly, maybe that's something we all need to do in the work that we do on a day-to-day basis. So let us pause right now, in the midst of our busyness and our business, to greet the spirit of life, the spirit of life that is larger than all of us and from whom we petition help and support this evening. It is the spirit of life, whether we call that spirit God, or our Creator, or the whole universe, or Jehovah, or Allah, that spirit, by whatever name, is never very far from us. And in fact, it infuses our lives and constantly acts through us to recreate the world around So as our prayer this evening, let us ask for that spirit to fill this room and work in and through us. For surely, all of us here are about creating and recreating the life of this community here in Salisbury, Maryland. We cannot do it on our own, and we do not do it on our own, but only through the spirit of life that is a gift to all of us and, in fact, brings us here together tonight. I will offer here a few lines of a poem by Mary Oliver. You might have heard of her, about that spirit. The spirit likes to dress up like this: ten fingers, ten toes, shoulders, and all the rest. It could float, of course, but would rather plumb through matter. It needs the metaphor of the body. It needs the body's world, instinct, and imagination, and tangibility, to be understood. So it enters us in the morning and at night. It lights up the deep and wondrous drownings of the body like a star. So I say to all of you tonight, may all of you be blessed and infused by this spirit in your body and heart and minds and imaginations as you work here this evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Langdon. Appreciate it. Please rise now and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize, I thought I saw him come in, John Cannon? Yes, John Cannon, the county council president. Welcome, John.
Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation, or presentation, I'd say.
Mr. President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We actually have a couple of presentations today. The first one is acknowledging another very important and special person in the audience who has given a lot to not only this city, but to our community. And she's done it in a really short amount of time. But I'm going to talk first about why we're recognizing her work and why we're recognizing what she's done for our community. And that's because federally, nationally, we acknowledge the service of those to organizations like AmeriCorps on this day. And today, we're going to talk a bit about, or I'm going to proclaim, that in Salisbury, we're also going to recognize national service, service to country and service to community. And so this proclamation is acknowledging service to others as a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. National service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their endeavors throughout their career. AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and in the process broaden their own education, career skills, and leadership abilities. National service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And the city of Salisbury has established that unique partnership with the Salisbury AmeriCorps, which has provided the city for the last three years with the program coordinator for its Salisbury Youth Civics Council, an organization with the mission to mobilize and empower the youth of our community by providing meaningful opportunities to engage in civic leadership and service. And the city of Salisbury joins the Corporation for National and Community Service, the National League of Cities, cities for service, mayors and county officials nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities by recognizing today as National Service Recognition Day and to henceforth be known as National Service Recognition Day in the city of Salisbury. And in acknowledging that, I think it's important that we bring up our program coordinator for the Youth Civics Council. Kendall, would you mind coming up? So Kendall Cratch, who has been giving the city of Salisbury incredible service and really, truly selfless service for the last year. And importantly, I think this is very important to recognize, she works with 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, and some 12th graders, a couple 12th graders, in our school system who give back to our community through community service projects of their own. They are mentored by government officials, by community leaders, community officials. And Kendall has taken on multiple projects, or shepherded multiple projects, of these young people's design to fruition in our community. And so we want to thank, we want to take a minute to thank and acknowledge Kendall for her service to the city of Salisbury and her service to the youth of our community. Absolutely. All right, we do have one other thing that we want to share today. On Thursday of last week, it was brought to our attention that the city of Salisbury was receiving the Maryland Sustainable Growth Award for 2017. This is an award that has been given out each year since 2012. And the Maryland Sustainable Growth Commission is comprised of business leaders from around the state of Maryland and government officials from around the state of Maryland appointed by the governor to a panel that selects cities, as well as developers and individuals who have established themselves as leaders in sustainable growth. And we won for the downtown master plan, the Envision Salisbury Master Plan. So I want to say congratulations to the city council for adopting that plan. I want to say congratulations to the staff and thank you to staff for their leadership on that project, as well as the over 2,500 individuals who were involved in that process put their names down as individuals engaged in that process, which stands in sharp contrast to the 1968 plan the city of Salisbury adopted where there's pictures of the 11 people in the plan, you know, an individual picture and name of the 11 people who were involved in the planning process. So congratulations to the city of Salisbury for that accomplishment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that, we entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Second it.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisil. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rudisil. Good evening, Ms. Carter. How are you?
Good evening. I'm going to speak into the mic since I make you all. I just, I thought I'd own it. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the April 3, 2017 closed session minutes, which you all received under a separate envelope. We had two typographical errors on lines 97 and 104. We need to strike mayor and put councilman in front of Irtan. We referenced too many mayors in that meeting. And you may be a mayor forever like president, but in this case, for clarity, we need to correct that. We also have the April 10, 2017 regular meeting minutes, the April 17, 2017 work session minutes, April 24, 2017 regular meeting minutes, May 8, 2017 regular meeting minutes, and we have resolution number 2751 to approve the appointment of Mary Ashanti to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending May 2021. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Mr. President. I understand that, I think I saw Mary come in. Mary, could you stand up? Congratulations, Mary. Thank you very much for volunteering. Appreciate it. Okay, we are at the point in time where we're going to have a public hearing on the Fenzel-only road annexation. Anyone who wishes to give testimony on the Fenzel-only road annexation, please stand and be sworn in. One at a time. I now open the public hearing for resolution number 2736 and resolution 2737 approving the annexation plan for the Fenzel Road-only annexation. Since there is no one to speak, I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 2736, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2737. So moved.
Second.
Mayor Day, could you present the resolution?
Bear with me, I'm going to need to do it digitally.
I can give you a hard copy if you'd like.
Okay. Resolution number 2737 is a resolution of the city of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of land situated contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the city of Salisbury to be known as Fenzel Property Only Road Annexation, beginning from the same at a point on the corporate limit, said point lying on the easterly right-of-way line of a private road running in a northerly direction from Only Road to a point at the southwest corner of Cedar Crossing Property LLC, extending east to a point X and then extending south to the northern side of Only Road near the intersection of Perry Drive. We can all picture that, right?
Yeah. All right, I'll now call the vote for approval of resolution number 2737. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Based on this vote, this annexation will become effective on Friday, July 7, 2017, after a 45-day waiting period. We will now be holding public hearings on constant yield tax rate, mayor's proposed FY18 budget, water and sewer rates, and fees. We will do these separately. Anyone who wants to speak at this public hearing, please stand now and be sworn in.
Okay, if you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask our city attorney, Mr. Tillman, to present the constant yield information.
I think on the rates, I need to defer to the internal services as far as what's being done exactly, as far as the numbers go.
That's, that's fine.
But basically, the, every year, the state establishes the constant yield tax rate, which basically is designed to deliver the same revenue as the prior year. So, you know, to the extent that assessments go up, the constant yield goes down. It's my understanding that the proposal this year would exceed that rate and therefore, under state law, we're required to have a public hearing and give the public the opportunity to have input with regard to that. That's, if you want the exact numbers, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Carter, can you enlighten us?
Yes, in the newspaper article, in the advertisement, it presents the assessment went from 1.7 billion to 1,751,437,174 to 1,168,423,301. In other words, a 1% increase in our assessable base. So if we leave the rate exactly as it is, which is .9432, we would generate a 1% increase in our revenue. And so the constant yield determines what we would have to reduce that rate to in order to generate exactly the same amount of revenue. So we would, the constant yield rate is .9341. And that's a, would be a reduction of .0091, so not even a penny. So those are the, the numbers that are in the advertisement.
I will now open the public hearing for the constant yield. Does anyone want to speak on that? It's been sworn in. All right, hearing, if no one wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing for that. We are now going to have the public hearing on the proposed FY18 budget. Mr. Tillman, you going to help us out?
This would be ordinance number 2423, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, for the period from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing, establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. And be it ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule A, operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, fund operations of the city of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule B, capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule C, anticipated grant expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that number one, the tax levy be in the same as hereby set at $1.06 per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property that is non-homeowner occupied, at $0.90 per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property that is homeowner occupied. Homeowner occupied status shall be determined based upon the final record received from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation that is used by the city to bill real property taxes. At $2.33 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as railroads and utilities, and at $2 per $100 of assessed valuation for all other personal property subject to taxation by the city of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And paragraph two, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2017, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Antited Code of Maryland as amended. And be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, by the Salisbury City Council, that the public hearing on the proposed ordinance will be held at 6:00 PM this evening in room 301 of the city government office building. That's it.
Okay, I know we have several, anybody that wants to speak, please raise your hand. All right, since we have a few people, just the rules of the game, please, when you get to the podium, please state your name. And you will have four minutes to state what you, what you like. And then I would ask that anybody that is coming up and going to say the exact same thing, please just say you support that and ditto, or if you have something to add, you may add that. So we'll, we'll begin. Do we have a list or the? Thank you. Okay, first up is Stuart Lear.
Good evening. I was kind of hoping I wouldn't have to talk in front of the council again, it's been a couple of years, but here I am. I wrote everything down so I'd stay on point tonight. Good evening, Mayor Jake Day, city council members, and the public. My name is Stuart Lear and my partner, Robert Malone, and I have several rental companies in the city of Salisbury. For years, we have heard how the rental business is applied on the city, how the industry charges rents of over $1,000 per month for their properties. In fact, these rents are charged on the newer apartment complexes and some housing near the university, college rentals. However, we have never asked what our average rents were, or I am sure none of the other landlords who provide affordable housing to the majority of renters in the city were asked either. In fact, our company's average rent is $653 per unit rented to the units rented in the city. Our rents are due on the 1st of the month and considered late if paid after the 5th of the month. Failure to pay rent is filed habitually on, habitually late renters on the 15th of the month. 10% to 15%, remember that number, of all our renters continuously struggle to pay rent on time and at being scheduled for Renters Court. Why is this important? Simple economics is the answer. Rental registration fees per unit were increased by 50% this year. Rental a company license fees also went up to $60 per company. Keep in mind, a business, we have several other businesses, their rental, their license fees for their businesses are $25, ours are $60. We absorb these costs, but for economic survival, we will have to increase rents to recoup increased property taxes, higher water sewer rates, and trash pickup if it is also increased. Now, the council should ask, if the rents increased to cover these costs, and already 10% to 15% of the tenants are struggling with existing rents, what's going to happen to these tenants? The answer, unfortunately, is they will be out on the street, some of them will be, and the city will have more homeless. Again, blame it on the greedy landlords, but what happens if Purdue, the hospital, the university costs go up? Yes, they increase their prices to compensate for the increased cost in order to survive. What is the difference between those industries and ours? Wycomico County has a 7.1% unemployment rate, and the recent news that we are the seventh-fastest-growing job market in the nation is great, except that we are a standard metropolitan statistical area, which means that it also includes Sussex County, which in turn skews the Salisbury's numbers dramatically. Bottom line, the city of Salisbury will still desperately needs affordable housing, which means rents have to be affordable for the majority of tenants. It is great to be the brother's keeper, but why put a burden on only one industry? My wife has helped several homeless, find, homeless people find housing and given food and other necessities to these homeless individuals with no recognition or even expected any. The cost to achieve this was nothing other than her time. The city wants to build another great bureaucracy to handle the same problem, but on the back on the residents who can afford it the least. Let's talk about increasing water and sewer rates for a minute. When I was in the service for this great country, we had an acronym for what we were experiencing with the water sewer rates. It was the seven Ps. Jake may know what the seven Ps are. I'm going to leave one word out, but it's proper prior planning prevents poor performance. And why is this important is this water sewer rate increase? Simply because a year ago, if you recall, with great fanfare, water sewer rates were reduced because of great management that made surplus in the water that we had in the water sewer funding. Now, one year later, we need a 15% increase. It doesn't make sense. Were water sewer rates decreased last year? Yes, they were. Bottom line, the rental business is not the enemy of the city of Salisbury. As a matter of fact, if we did not have the numerous conscientious landlords in the cities, we would truly have a city full of blight. Mayor Day recently walked and talked to residents in the Camden area. What did these residents have to say about their landlord? Was a landlord asked to go on this walkabout? You may be surprised that most tenants talk highly about the companies they rent from and just want affordable, crime-free areas to live and raise their children in. The industry wants the same thing. Why not try working as partners for a change instead of blaming our industry for all that's wrong with the city? Finally, raising property taxes in a discriminatory fashion against the rental industry as well as raising utility rates for the residents in Salisbury is not the way to make this city more appealing to homeownership. Partnerships between landlords and city will improve neighborhoods, reduce crime, generally improve the quality of life in the city, which in turn will make a city ownership more appealing to the general public. I want to give one example. My partner and I are the largest property owner in the Camden Heights area, probably. The 600 block of Salisbury, a number of years ago, it was one of the highest crime areas in the, in the city. Several shootings. Mr. Irtan, when he was mayor, had a news conference right in front of one of the houses.
You've got to wrap up pretty soon.
We took over.
You have to wrap up because your time is...
Okay. We took over that area and, and we worked with the city police, and now, if you look on your current crime records, you'll find that there's hardly any crime in that area. It's one of the safer areas. The residents appreciate us, but I'm sorry to say, I don't think the city does. Thank you.
Mary Ashanti?
Could I be the last, please?
Can you be last?
Yes, because our minds are not a question, I think it might be answered.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Lynn Bratton? Lynn Bratton.
How are you?
Former school teacher, I'm a visual learner, so I had to pass things out. Good evening, I'm Lynn Bratton. I reside at 303 South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. I have been a resident property owner of the City of Salisbury since 1973. I also own a number of other properties in the City of Salisbury as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I have been a resident of this city since 1973, when my soon-to-be husband and I purchased our first home on Middle Boulevard from the estate of Judge E. Sheldon Jones. We later moved one block over to South Boulevard where I continue to reside, and that's in the Camden neighborhood. Since 1984, I have also owned and managed other homes and apartments, providing safe, affordable, well-maintained housing for some of the most amazing and hardworking people in this community. They are all citizens of Salisbury, and I'm here tonight to speak on their behalf. While I applaud and support the renewal of energy and the life that this city is experiencing, and I know that all things have a cost, I do not support the two-tiered property taxation plan proposed in this city budget. I fully understand that an increase in taxes may be necessary to balance the budget, but I would also suggest that living within the current budget should be a priority with a serious look at budget expenditures that are not critically necessary. As a city, we may not be able to afford everything that we want. I specifically oppose the two-tiered tax plan for the following reasons. First, property owners currently pay an additional tax on rental properties in the form of the annual registration fee on each rental unit. With a 69.1% rental rate from the 2011-2015 U.S. Census Bureau information, the property rental industry already creates a huge source of income for the City of Salisbury. However, the residents of rental properties do not receive more services than any other citizen, and in fact, aren't taking advantage of many of our city's initiatives. My clients, and you know that I call them clients, they're my clients or my customers, I don't use other terms to denote them. My clients seldom journey downtown or to the Riverwalk. Their streets are often the last to be plowed on snowy days, and they use the bike lanes not for pleasure, but to go to work. Finally, some of my clients may be considered financially disadvantaged citizens. After paying the proposed increase in water, sewer and trash, they simply cannot afford this property tax increase, which would ultimately rest on their shoulders. This two-tiered system furthers the culture of the haves and the have-nots in our community that I have fought against during my entire tenure as a public school educator and counselor. We should be empowering these individuals, not increasing the income divide in our city or further disenfranchising some of the most vulnerable members of our community. Excuse me. If more money is truly needed, and I mean truly needed, to fund the essentials of running this great city, then all property owners should share that increase equally. A privileged class of homeowners should not receive special treatment, classification or tax advantage. Respectfully submitted by Lynn Property, resident at 303 South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Joel Maher, is it Maher?
Maher.
Maher.
Brought my nice little Maryland folder for this, I thought it was a proper occasion, so. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joel Maher. I am the president-elect of the Coastal Association of Realtors, and I'm also a Salisbury real estate agent. Our association has been communicating with the mayor and council about this proposed tax increase for the past few weeks, but we wanted to continue the conversation tonight during this public hearing because we feel that this is an important issue. We spend a lot of time advocating for homeownership and private property rights, and we do it locally, we do it at the state level, and we do it even in Washington, DC. Last week, we went out to Capitol Hill to speak with our federally elected officials about tax reform, because we're very concerned about the president's tax reform blueprint that is going to increase taxes for middle-class homeowners by an average of about $800. We're also concerned that the blueprint guts the mortgage interest deduction and eliminates a 1031 like-kind exchange. So much of our time is spent ensuring the future of our industry because too often, we feel the government turns into the real estate industry when they are in need of funding. In this case, Salisbury aims to incentivize homeownership by establishing two separate tax rates for homeowner occupied and non-owner occupied properties. We are 100% behind the idea of incentivizing homeownership, but should it be done on the backs of renters, investors and business owners? They are also an important part of the real estate industry. There is obviously a need for rentals in Salisbury, and yes, perhaps it would be ideal to cut down on the number of residential rentals in the city like Mayor Day proposed, but keep this in mind, there are hundreds of rental properties in the city that are owned by people who need to relocate and do not have enough equity in their homes to sell. A property tax increase is not going to help that situation. Let's talk about the commercial side. Most businesses in the city lease their commercial space, making those properties non-owner occupied and thus increasing taxes for businesses. This is going to impact business owners. Additionally, it could be more difficult for our commercial members to attract businesses to the city if the tax structure is complicated. This is going to impact commercial realtors. Our members who work every day to market the city to home buyers may also have difficulty with the tax structure, as some buyers want the flexibility of someday being able to rent their home, if need be. This is going to impact us as residential realtors. These increased costs will be passed along to the renters, many of whom can't afford to pay more, especially when their water and sewer rates are going up as well. If three out of four of all Salisbury residences are rentals, that means a significant portion of your constituents are renters. Perhaps not all of them vote, but they're still residents of the city, they pay property taxes through their rent. They work here, they shop here, they start families here, and a lot of them end up buying homes here. And just because they can't afford to buy a home at this time, or have another reason for not buying, doesn't make them any less of a significant as financial contributor to this city. This is going to impact the renters. Finally, this is going to impact the landlords and the property managers who are already being hit with numerous city-related costs, including the increased license fee costs implemented during last year's budget process. With all these new increases that are increasing the cost being paid by the rental industry, we wonder if the city, and this is an open discussion, and maybe not today, can tell us where the money is being spent? Is the money being used to subsidize the costs associated with the rental industry? Or is it being used to fund unrelated city programs? The foundation of our advocacy work is to protect private property rights, which is very much includes the right to purchase a property and rent it to somebody who needs a place to live. It also includes the right to use it as a rental property to establish a business. There are other ways to incentivize homeownership without increasing the taxes, driving up the cost for city residences, residences and making it more difficult for realtors to sell properties to people who may someday, for one reason or another, wish to rent their property to someone else. To give an example, we understand that you guys are tossing around the idea of providing cash incentives to people who convert their rental properties into homeowner occupied residences, and that's a great idea, guys, that's, we love that, let's keep that up. The demand for homes is there, we've been struggling with inventory shortages for over a year, but not everyone is able to buy or sell right now. Rental is our necessary piece of the local real estate market. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is the same attachment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the one from the other day? I got it.
I'm Brett Hopkins, I'm owner and operator of Fairfax Station Enterprises. I own and operate about 1,400 apartment homes, 60% of which are in Baltimore and 40% out here in Salisbury. I am adamantly against a two-tier segregated tax system. That is not good, you couldn't advertise that and call it good for any county or city, to discriminate against one group of businesses or homeowners or businesses. Okay, that, that doesn't bode well for any city. Any city that wants to expand and promote business is not going to segregate their businesses into one, two or three categories and then discriminate against one or two of those. In this attachment, I want to talk about some numbers, and I'll just read them to you folks. I have real operational numbers that I gave the mayor and the council. Direct benefit cost to the City of Salisbury that my companies pump into this city, okay? Payroll and contractors since 2008, when I entered the city here, $3.5 million. Property taxes we paid, $2.48 million. Utilities, well, water and sewer, $1.1 million. Capital expenditures, $1.6 million. Licensing and permit fees, $115,000. Property insurance, which we buy here locally, $740,000. Now, whose money is that? I didn't, I didn't print the money, I got it from renters. The renters here in Salisbury. This is just Salisbury numbers. It's just like Lynn said, like Joel said, we take in money, we churn it, we provide jobs to people, payroll, contractors, Ace Hardware, Home Depot, restaurants. Our money is churned highly effectively. If you segregate out our property taxes and increase it, again, 2.5 million we paid since 2008, increase it by 10, 12%, where's that money going to come from? Just like Lynn said, just like Joel said, we take it via rent increases on our residents, which are your city residents. So that money's going to come from somewhere, they're going to go out less, they're going to get less haircuts, buy less clothing, maybe defer a car payment, maybe not buy a car at all, maybe buy a used car. That, our economy is so tightly integrated, to segregate out, segregate out one business and grab more money from that business and expect it not to impact every other business, you don't understand the economics and finance of a city. And we're, we're all in this together, and that's what I started out with. When you segregate out a business, you're saying, no, we're not all in this together. 90% of us are in this together, we're going to put you 10% over here, and we're going to hammer you. We're going to hammer you higher, harder than we did these other guys, and expect you to pay for stuff that these residents, all our residents, the city residents, may or may not partake in, just like Lynn said. How many of our residents have kids that attend school? Not many, right? We have a lot of young professionals, all the students that go to SU that we house, they don't have kids going to the high school, yet we're paying property taxes as if they did. A lot of them don't have cars. Are they using the streets like we are? No. So, so what I'm saying is, to look at these numbers and to realize we're highly connected and to increase one part is going to impact negatively another part. You cannot avoid that. Thank you very much.
Next is Don Murphy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love the mayor and it kills me to be here doing this. Mayor Day, members of the city council, my name is Don Murphy. I can't vote for you, I can't vote against you, because I live about 100 miles away from here in Catonsville, Maryland. I own one recently purchased rental property in Salisbury on Canal Park, Canal Park Drive. I didn't drive 100 miles because the proposed budget increase will cost me an additional $6 a month. I'm here because it will cost much more. I'm here because I think those who support such a shift in the tax burden have a fundamental misunderstanding of rental property owners and of economics. So I'd like to share with you the specifics of my investment here in Salisbury. If you turn to the yellow page here, I want to share with you what it is I'm swimming in. In October 2015, my wife and I bought a condo on Canal Park Drive, a two-bedroom unit for $70,000. As I was cleaning the toilets, you were taking testimony on rent control, and I thought to myself, good God, did I make a mistake buying real estate in this town? Luckily, cooler heads prevailed, and you did not pass that legislation. For the record, I do not light my cigars with the nine $100 bills I get from my tenant each month. I use that money to pay the condo fees, the state taxes, the city taxes, the licensing fee, the management, the maintenance, the capital and the vacancy expenses, and finally the mortgage. After deducting all these costs associated with owning the unit, I have a net loss of $22 per month and $260 a year. So not only can I not light my cigars with Benjamins, I can't even afford cigars. For those who can, this increase will be passed directly on to the tenant, those people who in theory can least afford it. But landlords don't just compete for tenants in Salisbury, they compete right across the city line in the county. Not only do those property owners not have to pay this tax increase, they don't have to pay the tax at all. This tax increase and the tax puts Salisbury property owners and their rental properties at a competitive disadvantage. And since the money has to come from somewhere, if there's no profit from which to take it, you end up robbing one of the other expenses. If you want to know why so many rental properties are in such disrepair, it's because property maintenance is probably the first thing to be cut. Almost any property can turn a profit if the price is right. Since the mortgage is often the greatest expense, price is the first place to look when considering buying a rental property. In order to cover this additional $72 a year in tax proposed by this budget, I would have to buy my unit for $1,250 less than I did. Although in many urban areas, property values have started to rebound, as you heard earlier in the testimony about the assessments, Salisbury has not participated in that in the same way other areas have. There are still properties in this town that are worth less than zero because the economics just don't make any sense. And in the past year and a half, my wife and I have lost $10,000 in value, but I'm lucky. The unit under mine is worth less than half of what the owner paid back in 2008. Finally, I can't help but think that some of Salisbury's best days are ahead of it, and as such, I'm investing not just in real estate, but in the people and its governmental leaders. That would be you. So even though I'm losing money now, I'm still betting on Salisbury. In our building, there's a three-bedroom unit that I wanted to buy, but I couldn't because the 4-2 rule that you have doesn't allow me to charge rents that makes sense for that unit. I want to encourage you to relook at that as well. Finally, landlords aren't the enemy of the city or its residents, we aren't the cash cows and the fat cats this budget assumes we are. This budget is designed to encourage homeownership... This budget is designed to encourage homeownership, a noble idea perhaps, but it just doesn't make any sense. And at the expense of those -- and this budget is woefully ignorant of the free-market economics and is an insult to those who provide housing to more than half the population of this town. For all these reasons and many more, I hope you'll reject the two-tiered tax plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that there's other people who were not sworn in that would like to speak. Is there anybody who was not sworn in and would like to speak?
There are some people that were sworn in that didn't have -- that did not fill out a form.
Oh, okay.
This gentleman in the front row, for example.
Okay. Anybody, then, as long as you were sworn in. Mary, you still want to go last, right?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll -- is there anyone else that would like to speak now? Come on up. Please state your name.
My name is Jeremy Kirkendall, and I'm a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and the organizer of the Salisbury Bike Party. I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Day and the council for the level of funding that's being provided for bicycle infrastructure in the fiscal year 18 budget. During the annual Salisbury Bike Party, we had a loop of downtown streets that were closed off, and even though it was a very cold and rainy day, there were a ton of people just riding around downtown. Everybody had a smile on their face, and they just loved not having to worry about cars or anything. I know a lot of people that wish they could ride their bike more, and they just hesitate to do it on our roads because there's not a lot of infrastructure in place. The community definitely wants bicycle infrastructure and for continued funding in future years. And I think there's a few people here that might have showed up to also agree. Hi, Mary. And I just wanted to say thank you again for the level of funding that's being provided, and I urge you guys to continue making it a priority in the future years so that we can complete the Bicycle Master Plan.
Thank you, Jeremy. Anyone else? Mr. Ensley?
Good evening, mayor, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Richard Ensley, and I want to talk about this proposed tax differential, which I understand is a decrease in the rate that homeowners would pay and of maybe 3% or 4%. I may not be exact on that. And perhaps 13% or something in that area of an increase for what renters would pay. And I say what renters would pay because I'm assuming that we all do understand that renters are the people who are paying for the taxes as well as other expenses associated with rental properties. Homeownership is desirable. I think that's your premise, if I'm not mistaken, and I get that. But one of the first things that we need to recognize is that preferential treatment for one comes at the expense of others. There's plenty of good reasons to be a homeowner, but there's plenty of good reasons to be a renter as well. At the beginning of life, beginning of your adult life, virtually all of us, I would submit, started out as renters. That's where you start. I don't know anybody who started out as a young man or woman as a homeowner. You start out as a renter, and for good reasons, you can't afford to be a homeowner usually. But you have to start out as a renter and work your way up to that. That's the beginning of life, so to speak, and when we get to be seniors and get toward the end of life, there are a lot of people who, you might say, graduate from being homeowners, don't want the responsibilities anymore, don't want to cut the grass, don't want to fix the roof. They want to be able to call somebody else. They want to be able to call Stulier and say, "I got a problem. Fix it for me." And that's a legitimate reason. When I was of the age, I climbed ladders and painted the windows and so forth, but you get to a point where you don't want to do that anymore. So older people frequently get out of the homeownership business. Some people can't afford to be a homeowner and never will be able to afford to be a homeowner. And these are the people who can least afford to carry a disproportionate share of the Preferential treatment comes at the expense of someone else. Remind you of that. You wouldn't think of having a special tax or a disproportionate cost for renters to buy their groceries at the store, for their food. That would be absurd. You wouldn't consider such a thing. You wouldn't consider having a surtax or a disproportionate cost for renters to buy gasoline for their automobiles, for their heat, or electric. So why should renters pay more for their home, or their food, or their gas, or for that matter, the air they breathe? I can think of no good reason. The tax burden should not be shared equally. So I think we need to think about the consequences of this proposal. Something good for one is not so good for another. So I respectfully request that you all reconsider this proposal and eliminate it from the proposed budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary, you're up.
My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm president of Wyomkamka County NAACP. And first, thank God for the opportunity to be here, to the mayor, to the president of the city council, and the city council members and all those present. Good evening. My purpose for speaking is, someone asked me about this budget and about this proposal, and I didn't have the answers. And I wanted to hear what everyone else had to say in hopes to get some answers and also in hopes that the audience, the viewing audience, would get an understanding of this. And so I have some questions, and I don't know if you will answer, but I have some questions. I'm looking at the proposed tax structure, and the part that I'm looking at, so the owner-occupied, the current rate is .9432, and for investment commercial, the current is .9432. And under that same line, for personal property, there's nothing. So it's not being charged anything at this time? It is?
.221.
Okay, I -- okay.
.221. Or $2.21.
Okay, so it's $2.21. And the utility tax? I didn't see anything for that either.
It's the same rate.
It's the same rate. Okay. First, let me just say, I -- I'm sitting here, I'm listening, and I don't really have good feelings about rental properties from childhood, but the bottom line is, a lot of folks need rental properties because they can't afford to buy homes. In the NAACP, we advocate affordable homes, purchasing a home. But for those that can't, we advocate affordable, adequate renting, because not everyone wants to buy. Now, the questions I jotted down, I need to know the purpose, and I think folks are wanting to know the purpose of the different -- your different rate for landlords and for property owners. And the other question is, if this, if you keep this, who will it benefit? And maybe the answer to the first one I asked you, your purpose, may would tell me that. Some say that if the landlords are charged more than other property owners, the increase will be charged to the tenant. Now, you all know that this is true. At least I know this is true, because it has been in the past. And so will the increase in taxes to the landlords benefit the tenants? Will it motivate those that are in as tenants? Will it motivate them to become homeowners? Again, I don't know. All I have is questions, because folks called us and talked with us and wanted to know. So if you could please make sure that you answer these questions for the viewing audience, because the people that I most likely represent are people that are tenants. And from what I can see, they cannot afford to pay any more money. Their biggest concern is paying their rent, making sure that the house that they are renting is really worth paying for. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else want to speak on any of the resolutions? Okay, we thank you very much for your input. We will have a work session on June 5th where we will discuss what's been presented tonight, and then the budget will be on the -- for approval will be on the following Monday. I think it was June 12th. Okay? We thank everybody for their input, and we take it seriously, and we will discuss it. Thank you very much for coming. Are there any other public comments about any -- go to the order. Hearing none?
Mr. President?
Yes.
We need the water and sewer rates and the proposed fees as well as the other -- the proposed fees and the proposed water sewer rates. We need those public hearings.
Well, they were commenting, I think they were commenting during the thing about -- is there anybody that specifically wants to talk about proposed water and sewer rates? Because I know there was a couple of comments about it during the regular, when they were -- how about proposed fees? I think they were covered as well.
Should --
So we can close?
Close the public hearing and then let --
We will close the public hearing now.
And then let City Attorney Tillman present them?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done the tax rate.
He didn't present the last two.
Yeah, we need to present the last two. That's 2424 and 2425.
All right, 2424 is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates, and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1st, 2017, and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget of the city of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for the purposes of the Department of Public Works. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council, the city of Salisbury, that the following water and sewer rate schedule shall be adopted by the city of Salisbury. And when this was initially proposed, I read all the rates off, and I don't know if you want me to do that again this evening?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
I mean, it's there in the packet, so if anybody wants to go through it again. But there is a proposed increase.
And the fees?
Fees, yes.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody want to speak? Give you one more opportunity. Okay. We thank you again for coming. We will take it under advisement, and we will discuss it at the next work session. If there's no other business, yes?
The fee schedule?
That's what I said.
2425?
24.
That's what I just said. You said you covered it.
Oh, I thought you said 2424 for water and sewer.
Yeah, and then I said, "What about the proposed fees?"
Oh, well, we did cover it. That's true as well. I'm sorry, I just, I didn't hear but one of them I didn't hear about.
Okay.
Okay, yes. They were both covered previously.
Yeah, there is a fee schedule in the budget online. Okay? If you have any questions. Okay. If there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you coming in.